Hall missed everyone last week. I know we've been doing these every week and was not in the community last Wednesday, so I had to cancel that. So hopefully you didn't miss too much and hopefully we're still updated by the charts and other information from other people that are always available. But I did miss talking to y'all and glad to be back. I apologize about yesterday cancelling or rather last minute. I had something come up last minute that there was no way that I'd be able to be back by 2 o'clock. So last minute decision to cancel it and do it today. Hope everybody got noticed yesterday. I know that Daniel and Holly and a couple of others scrambled to put it on the crawl and put it on the portal. So I hope everybody's tuning in today. If not, we'll make sure that it's on the portal shortly after we're done, maybe tomorrow morning. And of course, Holly will send out a recap memo to everybody and we'll send it to all your families as well. Those will get out tomorrow. It'll be a day late because we're a day behind in doing the broadcast. So if any, if your family calls and asks that they haven't seen it yet, just tell them that they will have it tomorrow at some point. So we usually get that out usually before lunchtime the day after. So anyway, it's good to be back and this will be the last broadcast I'll do before we go to every other week starting next month. So I think the next time I'll do a broadcast is the 15th of August. Is that right, Holly? Do you know? I think that's right. So I think so we're going to do it every two weeks, the 12th. So I want to do it the 12th of next month. So August, yeah, August 12th will be the next time that we do this and then obviously two weeks after that. So we'll have some information how we're going to fill you in on stuff between that time. But this is the last time you'll see me for about two weeks, but you'll get to see somebody much nicer to look at than me on my off week. So we'll get, we'll dive into some stuff. I got some announcements and some updates and some good news to share. So we'll jump right into it. Today is Care Workers Appreciation Day. This is something new, but six months to the day after the World Health Organization declared coronavirus a global pandemic. They have now said we're recognizing Worker Appreciation Day and this is all frontline staff members. So it's very common in healthcare to have a nurses' week or a CNA week or maybe a doctor's week or, you know, in any kind of profession, administrative professionals' day or whatever it may be. But they have created this thing for frontline employees and it's not just to retirement communities or assisted living or healthcare hospitals. It's all frontline employees within healthcare. So I wanted to just take a moment to say thank you to all of our staff that's here every day. I consider all my staff frontline. We're all essential. We've been blessed to have jobs here every day. I'm called to are all essential. And then also to all the other extended healthcare workers that serve our residents, nurses and doctors and other clinics and hospitals and practices, and then all the other frontline workers throughout the state that do the work just like we do here at Springmore or a hospital just like Wake Med or Duke. So if you see any of our workers today, they may not even know. This is kind of a last minute thing. We're going to do something a little bit later for them. Y'all have already showed a very generous appreciation by your, by your gift that you gave the residents earlier in the year. And we've done stuff, but this is just another way to say thank you again to everybody all at once. So I will do that and Springmore will do that. But if you see any employees, please tell them thank you and happy Care Workers Appreciation Day. We are still on track. Next Wednesday, August 5th, to do our mass testing within the Health Center. I talked about that before. This is an initiative being led by the state of North Carolina to have all long-term care facility residents and employees tested. The state has partnered with CVS slash Omnicare. If you're not familiar with the name Omnicare, they are the 400-pound giant in long-term care pharmacies and they were acquired by CVS a couple of years ago. They're everywhere. So they, they had the volume, they had the staff and obviously the resources and money to do this. So they partnered with the state, which is great. And they're going to be testing all nursing homes throughout the state. So our turn is Wednesday. They'll be here all day and we'll be testing all staff and residents, but please be mindful, these are only residents and staff in the Health Center. So it's not supportive living, it's not independent living, it's just only the Health Center and only the residents and staff in the Health Center. That's the, you know, the Health Center's the licensed area and that's what the state is focusing on and really zoning in is those licensed nursing homes, which is, which is a part of Springmore. So we'll do that and we're glad that they finally initiated this. I talked about this for a while about doing mass testing and the state paying for it. You know, we did one round ourself and paid for it, which was great and we had a great baseline and we've seen exactly what we had hoped, well, we'd hoped to see no cases, but well, I guess what we expected to see is cases and then they've continued to trickle down. They've even trickled down even more today. So this will provide all the other communities a way to identify any residents or staff members that may have COVID and they can treat them as soon as possible, get them out of work, let them be quarantined, and then also gives us another baseline to see if we have any more residents or staff all at once that we can, that we'll be able to identify and quarantine them. Right now, we're doing that on a case-by-case basis based on employees informing us of symptoms they have and then of course doing the wellness checks on the residents in the Health Center twice a day, which we've been able to pick up on a lot of cases there. So anyway, so that will be August 5th and we'll talk more about that on my August 12th broadcast and let you know how that went. We had a nice follow-up visit by the Department of Health and Health and Service Regulations. They're the ones that license our, our nursing home and any licensed nursing home in the state of North Carolina. Ours is the Stuart Health Center or more precisely the Dan and Mary East Stuart Health Center. So they came out, did a follow-up visit. They came out the first time we had a case in the Health Center and that is procedural and it's also procedural for them to come out and do a follow-up visit sometime afterwards, once we have another case. So they came in on, I believe, Tuesday and asked for some stuff, talked to some staff, and then for two days, they, they said they're going to do a desk review. So a desk review is always a good, a good term when you hear a regulator come in for a health, for a Health Center inspection, that they're more want to look at policies and procedures and they're, and they're, and they didn't find anything serious when they first walked around. Now, part of it is they're probably doing more desk reviews now because they don't want to be in the communities long enough, but they are still doing surveys and if it was something serious, of course, they would stay here. So we have been waiting several days for our desk review. They called and interviewed a couple of GCTs, a couple of nurses, asked questions. What do you do when you go in a room, when you leave a room with gloves, mask, washing hands, all that stuff, trying to quiz and make sure or catch, if you would want them to get a citation, which we didn't get any, make sure that they know the proper policies and procedures and make sure that we are following those. So I'm proud to announce that we received a perfect survey, no citations at all. They always give you a few recommendations of best practices. They did that last time. We implemented a few and they checked on that and they gave us a few more this time from their perspective. It's always good just to kind of do what they say since it's their eyes that are actually investigating and looking. But we had a perfect survey, no citations at all. So I'm proud to announce that and glad to see they're following up on stuff. That's, the state's been pretty good so far in a lot of that stuff. Next, I want to talk about visitation. The visitation is still the same campus-wide as it has been. Independent living residents can visit outside socially distanced and/or even the two common rooms, one in North Village, one in South Village by signing up for hour-long slots in both the lobby of North and South Village. Those seem to be going well. I hope that you're having family come by and visit outside and doing that properly, but just a very friendly but stern reminder that, that family members are absolutely not allowed anywhere within Springmore. So, so again, no family members are allowed in your apartment. They're not allowed in the hallways, they're not allowed anywhere within Springmore. So I realize once we turn the sensors back on, some of the doors over in East, apparently the signs got removed. I did not know that for several days. So we created new signs and put them back up. They should have never been removed, but the visitation policy remains the same and I don't have a timeframe of when that will be lifted or changed. We are still hearing other communities throughout the state that are not even allowing family members on campus for outside visitations or in common spaces. So, so there's some people still very, very strict. I think that's way too harsh right now, especially since this has been going on for six months now. So I think we all again have to use common sense, wear these things, not hug and kiss our family members as much as we want to, as much as we'd like to, not at all hopefully, and, and just see them for a little bit, visit and then, and then hopefully, you know, things will get better. For the Health Center, the visitation has not changed at all as well. Just another reminder that that is all being implemented by the state. We're not allowed to allow any visitation. So people are getting cited from surveys or if they get reports that family members are doing outside visits and they are getting fined by surveyors. Now, that sounds crazy, but until they can come up with a policy, there's no face-to-face visits. We were doing window visits for a while. We'll be starting those back up pretty soon. If not already, I don't think we have. But the reason we stopped those where we did not want to be moving the people all around campus or all around the Health Center from second floor to first floor and kind of cross-contaminating everybody to get them to certain areas. So, so we're going to be starting those back up. Our numbers have really dropped. We'll just, we'll talk about it in a minute. But as far as person-to-person visitation, like in an outside setting, that has not happened yet. We do have a public policy group that Leading Age is working with the Department of Health and Service, Department of Health Service Regulations to come up with a policy for that. And that's in the works and we should hopefully have something soon. But again, that's still being held off. So no change in visitation unfortunately, but I think it's the right thing to do for now. I want to talk briefly about our chart. The chart, I just looked at it today, was updated and it's trending very, very, very favorable. We have six total active cases right now with only one being a resident and five staff members. So that's great. I think the last time, two weeks ago when I did this, I think we had nine people and that was down 50% from 18 people, I think, if my memory serves me right. Holly's nodding her head. So I think that's right. So, so six people now. Again, five staff members, only one resident and two staff members are expected to come off by the end of the week. We got one coming off tomorrow and then one coming off Saturday. So God willing, that will put us at three staff members and only one resident. And hopefully they'll be off soon. I'm not exactly sure their status or when they went on or when they went off. But you can see we're trending down, which is exactly what we want to see. And if we can get all, everybody back with no cases before we have our mass testing on Wednesday or only one or two, I think that's what you've heard me talk about week after week after week of just having very few cases and then realistically them popping up one or two here or there. I hate to say I think that's the best scenario, but I think that's the most realistic scenario. Maybe we'll go weeks at a time with nobody and that is our goal and that's what we're shooting for. But, but we also have to be realistic about it. The mass testing may produce a lot more positive tests of asymptomatic people that we do not know about. At least half of our staff members have been asymptomatic. So, so that just happened. So we'll see what August 5th brings, but I think to see our trends going down is just a great indicator of just staying the course of what we're doing and just, just continuing to do best practices. And unfortunately, it's just kind of waiting it out a little bit more than anything. So good news to report there. I also wanted to talk about some numbers that, that I saw and I know was, was brought up. Some staff members brought it up to me about something I think that was on WRAL about numbers of cases for residents and staff. And I may have a couple of other metrics in there for each. You could look up, it's like 48 pages or something of each retirement community throughout the state. And we were listed in there. We're listed in there. It's the Stuart Health Center, the Dan and Mary East Stuart Health Center, which is exactly the way it should be listed. That's the way our license reads in our Health Center. So it is not Springmore. It is the Dan and Mary East Stuart Health Center. So that is, again, that's the way it's listed. And we were listed on the, on the, on the chart, just as we should be. We've had cases, but the numbers are extremely inaccurate. I have no idea what timeframe they pulled those numbers or where they got those numbers from. They're completely inaccurate. They had 22 staff members and seven residents and I have, again, no clue of when that was pulled or where they got it from. We have an email out to the Health Department to see where that came from. The news apparently just goes straight to the Health Department to get this information. So how often the Health Department is updating their information and God knows where the news is getting their information. It's really hard to tell, but I can assure you, the numbers that we report every day on the portal is exactly the numbers we have. That is what Margot has to submit every day to the Health Center and that's what we have to post. Again, I have, I have no control over them. I'm not even concerned about it, to be quite honest. As long as I know and y'all know what our numbers are and we know we're reporting them and we had a perfect survey by the department and our numbers are trending down, whatever. WRAL can put in there whatever they want. It's, you know, I won't get into my soapbox about fake news, but it's hard to decipher what's true and what's fake, which leads me to another thing, which I won't get into soapbox. But I think this is a perfect example of showing how numbers are really skewed in this whole thing. And when they talk about number of deaths, the number of cases, I don't know how accurate that is, A, and B, I don't know how specific that is to actually coronavirus. Again, if somebody passed away that had the coronavirus, they're going to count that. But did they have a stroke and was in the hospital and then contracted the coronavirus and they died? I'm sure that happens a ton. I'm sure that, I'm sure that inhibits and increases the number of, of deaths that they, that they report each day locally and nationally. That's maybe that's, that's the way they reported. I have no idea. I don't get too hung up on that stuff. My concern is always just y'all and what we're doing here and as long as y'all know where we're at. And we want to get the information correct, obviously. We don't want people to think of the Stuart Health Center, they're incorrect with their numbers. So, you know, we're looking to get it fixed, but I don't know where these things come from. It's just can't worry about that stuff. I hadn't watched the news in well over a week and I don't know if I'll watch it anytime soon. I just can't bring myself to do it. It brings me down. So anyway, the numbers are correct that you're seeing, what you saw on WRAL or whatever. But when I do find out an answer, I'll let you guys know. So anyway, a couple of fun things. Kitchen update. We are at the final, final, final stages of that. We have the, the Health Department who oversees sanitation and I guess kitchen regulations for all the restaurants and approvals. They will be out here Monday to do their initial assessment of the kitchen, of our newly renovated kitchen. So they're going to come in and do their first assessment. And then on Wednesday the 5th, the same day we're having our mass testing, we have our building inspection from the city of Raleigh to evaluate all the electrical and all the building and all that stuff that the contractors have done. So God willing, if the first thing goes good Monday and she gets what she needs and the building inspectors sign off and everything and it's good to go and she comes back and does her final thing, we can tell the mobile kitchen company, we're done. We start moving all of the stuff out of there. We had in there, we had a few pieces of machinery in there, our cooking equipment, we'll put back in the kitchen. We'll get all our frozen food over there, all our dry food over there. We'll lock the key, won't throw it away because I got to come pick it up and then we'll, and then we'll fire up the new kitchen and get it going. So we're, we're almost there. We're just waiting on inspectors now. So the last 2% of the project, which is waiting on inspectors, is always kind of the worst because it's out of your control. But we are moving along. We're so, so very close to having that done. And I think, Daniel, you're still going to try to do a video? Yeah, Daniel's going to, I was asked, asked early on about doing a before and after. And I think we have some before pictures, don't we, Daniel? I think you have pictures. So Daniel's going to try actually do a video before we actually get everything in there and it gets all, not junked up, but as a working kitchens for so, so you guys can see how nice it is. So, so we'll do that and we'll show that to everybody, put that on the portal whenever the time comes. So that was excited to share that with y'all. And lastly, before we take some questions, I got some good announcements from Pathway. So I want to read this to y'all and then, excuse me, any questions we have, be happy to answer those for you. First one is from Leah, something I hinted to earlier. Since I'm going to do the Town Hall meeting every other week now, Leah is going to supplement every other Tuesday at 9, every Tuesday at, at 9:00 AM. She's going to do kind of like her little morning show she used to. Not going to have the fancy backdrop and going to be behind us here, but it's going to be at the podium. And again, starting this Tuesday, August 4th on 1341 at 9:00 AM, tune in for community announcements. So anything that I need to relay to y'all or anything that she wants to tell y'all, that will be another avenue of y'all having, having that information. So that will be really good. That was Leah's idea. I was really excited that she wanted to do that. And again, that was the other reference I was making, be something, somebody much nicer to look at than me every week. She also wanted me to make sure, everybody knows the virtual cooking party is filling up fast. There's only a few spaces that remain open. So call the hotline and call it now to sign up and make sure you leave your email address. The class will take place via Zoom. Zoom is a word I've never heard six months ago and again, I hear it more than any word I've heard in the past six months. So if you're not doing Zoom, we'll get you going, get you up to 2020 and you can enjoy some virtual cooking. Sounds pretty good. We have two concerts that are coming up, a musical event with the Corlies. That last name sounds familiar. That is our healthcare administrator, Kerry Corley, and his daughter, I believe Amanda. Is that right?
Kelly.
Kelly. Kelly. And I think Kelly is Kerry's youngest daughter, who is a sophomore at UNC Asheville. Probably more than you need to know, but she's very musically inclined like Kerry. So they are going to do a performance. I think they've already did it, right? And they, and, yep, they, they've already done it and it's recorded and we're going to be airing it. So free of charge too. So Kerry was trying to charge them admission fees for that. I'm totally kidding by the way, for this performance for he and his daughter. But that will be on 1341 coming up soon. And then also a performance by Fred Moyer. So we'll advertise these events with Flyer. So hang tight. It's something for y'all to look forward to. If you would like to opt out of deliveries to your door, activity books, snacks, et cetera, please call us at 7075. That's Leah's direct number and we'll, and we will remove you from the delivery list. Please note, if you opt out, it is for all items. You can also return any item you can't use and these will be shared with the Stuart Health Center. So we'll make the best of our resources. It'll be good stewards of our funds. And if you don't want to use something, just please give it back to us and then we'll make sure someone that may want to use it at the Health Center gets a chance. If you have DVDs that you'd like to donate to Springmore, please send them to Leah or Brenda. This is a really, really cool idea. They are stocking a movie cart that volunteers will bring to your apartment for you to check out a movie. You would call the hotline to let us know you would like the cart to come by. This will begin as a trial on South Village and more details to come. So if y'all remember like Blockbuster Video or Family Video, I think there's still one Blockbuster in business. I can't remember where it is. Alaska. Lori Higgins from downtown. Alaska. So just like, it's a wealth of knowledge Lori she is, you know? So, so there is, so it's like a mobile Blockbuster, you know? So hopefully your neighbor didn't check out something you wanted to see. I always would go to Blockbuster when I was a kid and you'd flip through and they're all out. It's the worst. God, it's terrible. Or a video game, remember that Brad? You rent video games. It's okay. So anyway, mobile movie cart, liking that. And then lastly, mail update from North Village. We've recently added package identification, notification cards. If you have a package, we'll put notification in your folder. Please, please pick up your package and leave the notification in the tray on the mail sorting table. This seems to be working well so far. So thank you again for all of our volunteers that continue to work hard every day. I know we can't continue this forever, but for now, I think this is the absolute best thing we could be doing and we're so, so thankful to have the volunteers help do that. And I promise y'all will not be forgotten and we need to, I must recognize y'all as part of the Direct Care Workers Appreciation Day today. So thank you. Two more pages of announcements from our chaplains today at 3 o'clock. Oh, yeah. Okay. So that's right. So they gave this to me yesterday. I hope you all had a wonderful Vital Conversations group. A group one met in the auditorium. So that was very productive and I hope that went well. We'll jump to Sunday, August 2nd at 7:00 PM. Vesper streaming live from the auditorium and Lori will be preaching with more details about Blockbusters in Alaska perhaps. And if you would like to attend in person, please call Juliana or Lori to reserve. Did I say that wrong?
It's Oregon. I listened to the morning, so I'm happy. It's Oregon's the last one. The one in Pink Ridge was the second to last one.
Okay. So we have a correction on the last Blockbuster location. It's not Alaska, it's Oregon. So Daniel and Lori were scurrying like Jeopardy judges to make the corrections. Bend, Oregon. Yeah, it's a good brewery in Bend, Oregon. The shoots if you ever, you guys ever go there. Anyway, so Vesper's 7:00 PM. Be there. Lori will be preaching in the auditorium. Monday, August 3rd, 2:00 PM Chaplains Movie, Seven Days in Utopia in the auditorium. At this time, the event is full, but continue to watch monthly. Pathway is to sign up for the next Chaplains Movie Event. Tuesday, August 4th, from 3:00 to 4:30 will be Group Two of Vital Conversations. They will meet in the auditorium. So I think two groups right now is what y'all have. So splitting them up has been very well received. I know that is, it's a very, it's a very good group to have and I think it's important to have those conversations. Some good news I didn't share, but I'll go and let the cat out of the bag a little bit. Mr. Murphy Osborne brought this up, I think a while back, maybe somebody before him. But he's always talking about the projection screen here and the, and the projector we hear not being able to see if you sit up front and reading the scripts at the bottom. So we have already ordered and in the process of installing a new screen that will be up closer to the stage and a new projector that will be back further. It will be larger, it'll be up to date and y'all should have a much better screen, a much better picture and everybody should be able to see it in the auditorium. Where are we at on that, Daniel? Still just?
Logistics.
Okay. So waiting on some logistics and our vendor to come and kind of get it all rolling. But we have ordered the stuff and it's in motion. So hopefully y'all will see a much, have a much better movie experience here in the auditorium come a couple of weeks or maybe a month from now. So, all right. Lastly, our fitness updates for the Town Hall. Fitness classes. The new fitness schedule started this week. So thank you for your patience as the staff worked to create a schedule that accommodated all the different needs and interests. There are currently 107 residents enrolled in fitness classes. That's amazing. Even during this time, 107 people are really committed and dedicated to the fitness classes and staying fit through a scheduled routine. The fitness team was providing 33 classes per week, but the new schedule, they're teaching 47. So they've increased, it's amazing, about 14 classes. So 47 classes per week. The North Village Great Room can hold eight participants and the South Village Movement Room can hold five participants. The Wellness Center Pool can hold 10 participants. Each area has tape on the floor or cones to help us maintain social distance during the classes. So if you recall, the reason we stopped those was to evaluate how we could continue to do that moving forward. So we had to reduce the, the class size, which, which we reduced the class size, but increased the number of classes offered. So thanks to our fitness staff that's really helping make that happen. If you're not participating and would like to get involved, call Kerry Ritchie, I can't remember her extension right now, and see what's available. Let's see, North Village Exercise Room. The North Village Exercise Room is available and that's only for one person. That's a pretty small room. If y'all are familiar with it, you know, it's kind of tight there. So it is available, but for one person, a whiteboard is available on the wall outside the room for you to schedule an exercise session. Please do not reserve appointments if you're not able to be consistent. The fitness staff will erase the board every two weeks to allow for new appointments to be made. So make sure everybody's getting a turn, keep it consistent. So we can keep a schedule and more importantly, y'all can keep a schedule and make sure you can come in when you want to and when you have it planned. You're welcome to drop in and use the room if no one else is occupying the space. You don't have to make a reservation ahead of time, but will have to leave if a resident shows up with their reservation. So just be mindful of that. May get lucky and nobody in there. But it's a good chance that Charlene Young will maybe in there doing some exercises. I think she's one of the bigger, bigger advocates for that room and I know she likes to use it a lot. So, so watch out. She may be using it. Pool reminders. Pool usage is going well. So please remember to use the signup genius to reserve a 30-minute session. The link is on the portal. If you have any questions, let us know. We'll help you with that. It's under the important links. Should be pretty be pretty easy to do. Please only sign up for one 30-minute session. Married couples may share a lane if they would like to come at the, at the same time and they're not, and there are two lanes available. And again, call Kerry Ritchie at, I do not know her extension, um, with any questions. So her office is over in South Village and her number is posted in probably many, many different places. I just for the life of me cannot recall what it is. Yep. We will put that in the memo. Holly will put that in the memo. Um, and, uh, and with that, that's all of our announcements for the week. I know we had a lot of updates we wanted to talk about and share some stuff and where we're heading and what we're doing. So at that time, I'll be hap, well, this time I'll be happy to take any phone calls that y'all may have, uh, 7054. Uh, let me know what's on your mind and I will do my best to try to answer those the best I can. So.
How should the welcoming committee be handling a new move-in next Tuesday?
Should the resident be quarantined? So the question is, how should the welcoming committee be handling a new move-in next Tuesday? Um, and will they be quarantined? I think, um, I know, I don't think actually I'm pretty confident in this, um, that I told everybody that we have an option now with new people that are moving in and independent living. You can either choose to quarantine for two weeks or you can provide us a, um, negative COVID test within just a few days before you move in and not have to quarantine. It's really tough to have people isolate as soon as they move into a new place. So, so we gave them that option. Some people take advantage of the COVID tests. So they don't have to isolate. Some of them isolate. So, um, so they are being quarantined if they do not provide us a positive test. As far as the welcome committee, um, that is all resident-led. I don't know the best way to do that, but I would suggest that you, I go visit all the new residents, um, about a month after they move in. I hadn't visited anybody in over five months. So, um, I'm just being precau, I'm being cautious about that. I'm not just putting myself or anybody else in harm with that. So I think maybe a friendly phone call would be best. If you wanted to meet somebody outside on the patio and sit, sit six feet apart, I think that's great as well. So I think the two options are a phone call and introduce yourself, let them know who you are. Here's your num, give them your number if you, if they need anything or you can schedule a time to meet outside. That's what I'd suggest. Again, that's all resident-led. So, um, call me separately if I didn't explain that and want to maybe talk a little more detail about it.
If the staff member's been quarantined for an extended period, say 14 days, are they, how are they getting paid?
Okay. So the question is, um, if a staff member has been quarantined for an extended period of time, up to 14 days, how are they being paid? They're able to use their sick time and their vacation time. So their personal time off, um, which is a benefit to them at Springmore. They earned that and accrue that here. They can use, um, um, of course, sick time is the best thing to use. And if they run out of that time, they can use their vacation time to ensure they're paid.
What are the current rules for the elevators?
Uh, the question is, what's the current rules for the elevator? Um, I think at one time we had up signs that said one person per elevator. Is that right?
One person or a married couple.
Okay. One person or a married couple. Um, that's, I still think the best practice. Um, I see that at a lot of places I go. Um, even, um, even recently I saw just one person per elevator. I know it, um, even it, I was talking to somebody at their condo complex at the beach. It's one person per elevator. So, um, I would stick with that. I think that's, I think that's best practice for now.
Can there be emergency lights installed in the stairwells?
What now?
Emergency lights installed in the stairwells. Can there, does that happen?
I think we have one, don't we?
I'm not sure.
Um, so the question is, can there be emergency lights installed in the stairwell? Um, I'm, I'm almost certain they, they are installed in the stairwell. I know at one time, um, they did not come on when we had a bad power outage because the whole, um, backup generator and transfer just completely blew and fried and even, and even, um, knocked out the emergency lights. Um, but I think each stairwell has them. If I'm not, if I'm not correct, well, I'll make sure Holly puts it in there. Um, I'm almost certain that's required, but I, for again, I may be wrong. One may be missing them for some reason. Maybe in North Village, they were required as a code in South Village and we built it three years later, or not we, uh, but when, um, founders built it three years later, maybe it wasn't required. Um, but I think, I thought they were in every stairwell. We'll, we'll double check and put that in there.
Have you heard anything about that? If so, you know, if it happened, is it going to be in time for absentee ballots and stuff to be redirected?
So the question is, um, is Springmore set up as a, as a polling place? And if we have any information on that. Um, the last we heard that that was still owned, that there was still going to be, um, a polling place. It's, it's, I think the only people that come here is actually y'all. Um, I think we do have another community, um, Abbott's Wood that comes over. Um, but I think we could probably do that outside for them, not have them come in, or we'd have to work around that. But, um, I've heard a lot about elections and questions about that. So I think that's going to be more when the time comes. Um, is that September, November wins the election?
November.
November.
Absentee ballots need to be sent in early.
Okay. So, um, so they're saying, uh, the absentee ballots need to be sent in early. Unfortunately, we cannot help y'all with that. Uh, we had that on our leading age call Monday. They got into a really, we're very, I don't know if another retirement crew is actually a polling center. I don't know. I, I, maybe Judd pulled a string back in the day and made that happen like the, like the three-way power thing that we're so thankful to have. But I don't know how the heck we're a polling place, but we are and it's just for y'all. So, which is really, really awesome. Um, so I, I don't know what will happen. Will they still come here? Will you have to do absentee ballots? I'm not sure. But I just know that we, we can, I think people that work for the polls can assist you once you're here and they're here with certain things, but we can't help with absentee. I mean, I can provide you information and kind of point you in the right direction, but as far as getting stuff and helping, we're, we're just not allowed to do that. So, um, but as far as I, as latest I've heard, that they're still planning to be here. Um, but that could change tomorrow. So as soon as we hear something, we will let y'all know. But if you're hesitant and thinking, gosh, probably not going to happen, I think Juliana's right. Go ahead and get your absentee ballot, um, as quick as you can so you can get it in to make sure you cast your vote.
I agree.
Okay. And Holly just told me the library has them. So Mrs. Bridges probably got that for everybody. And, um, and yeah, so we will, uh, so that they're in there if, if you want to use them.
Just a quick, uh, comment on the election. I talked with the Wake County Board of Elections last week. They are prepared for the November election here. They're going to bring a ton of PPE, so it's definitely each person. And, um, they're going to provide extra trashcans. Spacing, of course, will be different. And I did talk with them also about, um, Abbott's Wood possibly doing a person side.
Okay. Awesome. So Leah just came in who really helps with the election and gave me an update. I don't know if you could hear or not, so I'll repeat it. She said she just talked to Wake County Board of Elections just this week and we're, we are still on to have the in-person election here. They're bringing a lot of staff and a lot of PPE for each of you and for the volunteers. So, um, so we, they're going to have it properly spaced out. A lot of trashcans disposed of the PPE and give you new PPE. So it looks like they're all squared away to make sure that you guys are going to be safe and also the volunteers are going to be safe. And, uh, Abbott's Wood, which is, uh, the little assisted living community down here on Creedmoor, who usually comes here, um, Leah is working to have that a curbside. So they don't even have to come in the building. So, um, so that's all good news. It looks like we'll be good to go here. So I would plan on just voting here, uh, whenever that day is in November. And, um, we will, uh, hopefully things will go as planned. So yeah, good news. All right. Well, that's all the questions we had. Um, thank y'all. Hope it was a, some good information. Hope y'all learned a little something or, um, you know, maybe created some thought. Um, again, we'll get this recap memo out to you, um, sometime tomorrow and we'll get it to all your family members as well. In the meantime, have a great weekend. Stay safe and we will see you in a couple of weeks. Thanks so much.